Ready? Everybody here? Ready to go? We're gonna call this study session order at 5:30 PM. We're on the dot. Mr. Domer, before we do roll call, you want to discuss Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we're gonna be suspending audio comments from Zoom. We will still be transmitting and broadcasting Zoom for video presentation. But at this time and until otherwise notified, if people want to make comments at the City Council meeting, they need to be here in person to provide comments.
Thank you.
Or submit it by email before the meeting.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Domer.
Yes, Councilmember Crosby?
Here.
Councilmember Casha Fagita?
Here, sir.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Lau? Mayor Hepburn?
Present.
All present, sir.
Well, I welcome all of you here tonight, but it's mostly staff. But welcome all of you anyway, and for a meeting which we will be conducting a study session on LA Impact and LA HIDA. These are two regional law enforcement agencies that Laverne is fortunate to be an important part of and which will be explained during this session. I want to remind everyone that per the city's rules of decorum, all speakers, members of the audience, and councilmembers are conduct themselves with decorum and to not engage in conduct that interrupts the orderly conduct of the study session. Mr. Domer, please call forward the presenting staff member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to call forward our Director of Finance, Mrs. Kristi Lopez.
Good evening, Director Lopez. Long time no see.
Yes, good evening. So, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Tonight, we will discuss the fiduciary services offered by the city to external agencies and provide a brief overview of those agencies' operations. Soon as it wakes up. Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little shorter. The city offers fiduciary services to two external agencies. The first agency is the, it's a long name, they both are, Los Angeles Interagency Metropolitan Police Apprehensive Crime Task Force, or as it is widely known to law enforcement services, LA Impact. We provide two, we have two agreements with them. The first is a financial services agreement, and then the second is an asset forfeiture agreement. The second agency is the Los Angeles High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, or LA HIDA. And for that one, we provide financial services. So there's a lot of information on this slide, which I wanted to do for, to allow us to go back and look at this, since we will be leaving this up for the public to view. So this is something that they can look back at and at least get the basic information for LA Impact without, you know, watching the video. So LA Impact was formed out of a need in 1991. Originally, the entire funding came from the HIDA program. And actually, at the time when the city took over in 2001, when we started doing their fiduciary services, the HIDA grant was under the city's name. But in 2011, the LA Impact became a JPA. And then they were allowed to then apply for that HIDA grant on their own, which is why that has shifted. But in 1991, it was launched as a response to a lot of the drug activity that was happening. And they wanted to find a way to combat it and do that in a regional way. So there are 44 member agencies currently that are part of the JPA, and 25 are currently participating. LA Impact provides a lot of resources to the member agencies. Some of those are lab response, air support, addressing crimes like the smash and grab robberies. And what they do is, if they see a need, then they will create what they call a group. So when they had a bunch of smash and grabs, they would create a group and say, "Okay, you are going to focus on these smash and grabs." And that's kind of what they do. Same thing with the grow labs. They identified a group that would go in and just look at those grow labs and actually break them down. So as they see those needs, then they address them regionally. Just like any other agency, they have core values. Their core values are service to communities by enhancing public safety, teamwork through collaboration, enhancing resources by supporting member agencies' law enforcement. And their primary goal is to target criminal enterprises, promote regionalization, enhance professionalism, and financial responsibility. So in addition to having a HIDA grant, which actually is not under the city, they also have asset forfeiture funds through both federal and state. So that's how they are funded. So LA Impact and the City of Laverne. So the city has been a key member since the inception of LA Impact, when it was started by the LA County Chiefs in 1991. And the chief of LAP, sorry, Laverne Police Department has sat on the executive committee since then. So since 2001, the city started providing the financial services. And that was because our chief was sitting on the board and the opportunity became available. And so they jumped at the opportunity to continue that partnership just in a more advanced way, I guess. And the services that we currently provide for those financial services are accounting, reporting, oversight. And then we also do their regular and single audit, preparation, and support. In 2018, the city signed the second agreement to assume oversight of the responsibility for the federal asset forfeiture funds in the name of the task force. So technically, they are in the city's name. However, they are for the use of the task force activities, and the city cannot touch them for our uses because they are approved by their board. The services that are provided for the asset forfeiture are very similar to financial services with the, with a couple additional areas. Federal asset forfeitures, like all federal funds, are highly, they're very complicated to use. You have to be, make sure that you're dotting every I and crossing every T. And so we have to make sure that all of their federal asset forfeiture funds are spent in compliance with the guidelines that the DOT and the DOJ release. And we also complete a annual equitable sharing, annual certification that is presented or is completed to the federal government. And that's on all of the activities of those funds. So I'm gonna move on to HIDA. So HIDA was originally created by the Office of the National Drug Control Policy, which falls under the Office of the President. And this was as a response to the increase of drug activity with a mission to reduce substance abuse. HIDA was created as a funding source to encourage partnerships, foster collaboration, cooperation, information, and intelligence sharing between federal, state, local, tribal law enforcement agencies to develop strategies to address local issues with national implications. LA HIDA covers a very large area. It covers four counties, serving a population of over 17 million. Just as a fun note, they mentioned that there are only three states in the U.S. that actually contain a higher population than the counties that they serve. The initiatives for LA HIDA are started out of need. So in addition to, like LA Impact, for example, LA Clear started because they found that maybe there was an undercover officer from LA County who was, you know, selling drugs to an undercover officer for San Bernardino. And so they wanted to make sure that that didn't happen. And so it's kind of like a registration. So if you're an undercover officer, you call in and say, "Hey, I'm doing this," you know, whatever it's called. "I'm deal this drug buy, you know, and I'm doing it in this area." It's very impressive. When we went to see it, they have to call in their cases, and then if there is a conflict, so someone is close, two cases are within each other, then they will contact each undercover officer and let them know, "Hey, there's, you know, an undercover team nearby. Make sure that you don't sell to them." Right? Because then it would kind of defeat the purpose. So same thing as LA Impact. LA HIDA has a lot of missions and goals which are listed up there. But really, they're trying to reduce the drug use, the drug trafficking, and make sure that they encourage local agencies, state, federal, to all work together. So LA HIDA and the City of Laverne. So there are a number of initiatives that are under LA HIDA because it is a funding source. So the ones that the city has signed our name on the grant for are the ones that are listed there. So the Office of Director, which really provides that administrative support for all of the initiatives. LA Clear, which is the one that I just spoke about. They are a large information clearinghouse, so they're the ones that gather that information about, you know, the drug buys and make sure that people don't interact with each other that shouldn't. J-RIC, the Joint Regional Intelligence Center, collects information and distributes that to all of the agencies so that they can be up to date on what's happening with the drug information. They even have a drug sheet that tells you how much you should be buying drugs for. So they collect all of that information. And then the other ones, Regional Methamphetamine Task Force focuses on meth. And then the Southern California Drug Task Force also focuses on drugs. Those are just different areas. So they're in Riverside, San Bernardino, and those are the ones that are focusing in those areas, whereas in LA, we have LA Impact. So in total, the LA HIDA initiative that we currently have is annually $6.2 million. This is an annual grant. So this year, for example, we spent $6.9 million, but some of that was from the prior year's grant because it is a two-year grant period. So they can roll over. You'll see tonight, just as a mention, that we are bringing to you a proposal of increasing the grant amount to add for an additional $850,000, which would cover J-RIC's personnel. Currently, we do cover some of it, but the other part of it is with the FBI. And the federal agency has a lot, again, more restrictions. And so a lot of times, they lose those funds because they can't shift them. So one thing I missed, going back to LA Impact, is they do pay us, and I missed that. I know. So, sorry. Let's go back. Compensation for LA Impact is $250,000. $130,000 of that is for the financial services, and the other $120 is for the asset forfeiture. Yeah, sure.
I'd like to know, as far as the liability associated with what we're doing, I would assume that they have their own liability insurance for the activities that they're doing, whether that's through the JPIA or some other authority. And does any of that come back to us, being the finance people associated with it?
No. So the liability that the city has is purely financial. So if I steal money, or if someone else steals money, then that's our liability. But we are protected even in the event that, because again, there are a lot of restrictions. So if something passes through and we have an audit, we're actually in the middle of a DOT audit right now. So if we have an audit, and they look at something and say, "Listen, you shouldn't have spent that because it didn't meet our guidelines." We have in our agreement that LA Impact will still pay for that. So if someone shoots someone or runs over someone, it's not, the operation side of it is not ours. They have a JPA, we're part of the JPA, but we are not liable for their operations. It's only the part of acting as their fiduciary, that's what we have liability for.
And are we still doing their payroll as well?
No. We don't, we don't, they are not employees of the city. We pay, it's another agency, it's strategic contracting services. They are the employer of record, but the city does not have any employees.
We just write a check for that.
Correct.
So we don't have any liability as far as hers or any other?
We didn't. We do not. We did in the beginning.
Right.
That's just probably what you're remembering, and then that changed. We shifted that, so we do not have any liability.
Great. I think Mr. Freya had a comment, if you don't mind. Kristi?
Yeah.
I understood your question. Was liability based on enforcement action? Would that also be part of it?
I mean, we can put an umbrella over the agency, you know, as far as liability.
I'm sorry. So when it comes to enforcement out in the field during an investigation, for example, there's a number of participating agencies, El Segundo, Laverne, Covina, whoever gets involved in an incident. For example, if Covina was to use force, liability would fall under Covina. Of course, anybody can sue anybody for anything, but liability, LA Impact's understanding for each agency is the liability falls under the agency or the person who works for that agency if they use force, if they're involved in a traffic collision, taking enforcement action, whatever that may be, that liability falls under the city of that employee.
Do we have a number of employees that are currently assigned to LA Impact?
As far as Laverne's liability?
How many personnel do we have that are out there enforcing this or with you?
For Laverne, I'm currently assigned to LA Impact. And then, as Kristi mentioned, there's 22 participating agencies, including the Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, Los Angeles Police Department, a number of Foothill City agencies. So roughly 30 to 45 enforcement officers.
Okay. But as far as the city is concerned, we just have one, and that's you?
Correct. In a management position.
And in a management position, so you're not likely to be chasing somebody and causing a liability?
overseeing things, but no, not likely. And again, it would fall, the responsibility or the burden would fall on that initiating investigator.
That might be in Kristi's report, as she continues. That's the boss's, Theo.
Thank you.
Besides that, you look great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freya. Appreciate it. Kristi?
And as far as staffing, that's up to the police department. So in the event that they have staff, they will put them on there. I know there were times in the past where we had both Freya and another officer on the force, or on the task force, but that's based on staffing levels, I think. Yes, okay. I know more about this stuff than I ever thought I ever would, but anyways, okay. So sorry about that. Going back to HIDA. HIDA also pays us. They pay us $150,000 for doing financial services. In the agreement tonight, where we are asking you to look at possibly adding that $850,000, we discussed that there would be an increase of $15,000 to an annual fee of $165,000. Right. So LA HIDA, we just started in May of '22. So theirs is, when we went back and looked at the hours that we're spending on it, and we are being fairly compensated from what we look at. We were able to hire a position with the addition of LA HIDA. So we have a new accountant position. And just looking at the time that that accountant spends on LA HIDA, we are benefiting from this, yes.
This additional increase, proposed increase of $850,000, that is not coming out of Laverne's general fund. That is still coming out of the grant and being paid out of LA HIDA, right?
Correct. It is. I have another slide that I'll kind of go over that a little bit. But yes, we are being reimbursed 100% for all of the activities. So that's one thing that we wanted to talk about, is the opportunity loss because we are using idle cash right now to fund these activities until we get that reimbursement. We are receiving reimbursement between 15 and 27 days from the end of the month. And so what I did is I went back and looked at the, or the end of the month and what that balance was. So this is the cash balance, which is also listed in the staff report tonight. And the average amount monthly is $575,000, a negative balance that we do have because we are waiting for those funds to be reimbursed to us. And one of the things that I don't believe that they really took into account when they signed this agreement was this idle cash. But I believe the reason for that was because we were in a very different position market-wise. Investment returns, we're not seeing 5% returns at the time. I looked back at the June 2022 Treasuries Report, and 93% of our funds were in LEAF, which is the local agency investment fund. And at the time, they were giving us a return of 0.86%, which would translate to roughly a loss of $5,000 a year. So it was very, very minimal. So I don't think that it was really something that they thought about because of that reason. Looking back at it, since we are looking to, you know, switch some of our investment activities, there's a possibility that this revenue, or sorry, this cash could result in an opportunity loss of between $17,000 and $28,000 a year, which is why we asked them to give us that increase of $15,000, which we think is sufficient to cover because we already are sufficiently covering the activities that we perform for them. So it's kind of, we do pay for it, but then we get reimbursed. They pay us back, yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the things coming on board here and seeing the relationship we have with HIDA and LA Impact, I always want to make sure that we are, you know, covering our costs, our staff time. There's a discussion about, you know, more officers. You know, on when you loan an officer out, we're still paying for that officer. We're getting the advantages of them being on that task force. With Tom being in the management, there's a little bit of a different relationship. But, you know, we're always going to be looking at this on an annual basis, if not more frequently, to make sure that it makes sense for us. Because, you know, our number-one obligation and responsibility is to our own finances here. And so if it ever gets down to that point, HIDA knows, LA Impact knows, that we're here for ourselves. But while we can, and while we're being compensated and able to have an extra accountant, it does assist us also. So it is a beneficial relationship that, at this point, you know, recommending that we stay in and keep going because there's a lot of interesting things that we can get out of. And I think we may talk about those later, but real quick, you know, there was an incident about a month and a half ago. And because of the contacts and the relationships with LA HIDA, we were able to have a team over here to investigate something in our industrial area that we probably would not have been able to have at any other time. So, but it came almost instantaneously when we asked. And that's one of the benefits of being involved in doing the fiduciary items that we have.
And I think my esteemed colleague here was really asking, "If we had more officers, would there be a higher percentage coming back to us in any forfeiture items?" I think they're divided equally just through the people. I don't know if it's based on your involvement.
So, yeah. So the asset forfeiture shares, which is what you're talking about, it is based on the amount of work that is done. So the contribution that you have, but that has actually shifted. So asset forfeiture has changed a lot since I started. We used to actually be able to accept asset forfeiture on our own, and then the DOJ changed that, and we couldn't, or the Attorney General, I believe, changed it. And we could no longer do that, and then we had to have a task force that was with us. So Laverne actually doesn't obtain any asset forfeitures on our own. Any additional revenues that we get are from old cases that we're getting in. So we do get shares for, or not shares, we get overtime reimbursement from LA Impact if there is someone on task force, but that comes from state asset forfeiture, not federal asset forfeiture, because that's not an allowed expense. So there's a lot of different rules that are involved in that. But the money that we get right now is purely for fiduciary services. It has nothing to do with the number of officers that we have on staff or on the task force. It's purely for the work that finance does. And the asset forfeiture, a little bit for PD, but mainly it's financed. Yeah. Yeah, I think we just got paid on the 2012 one. I could be wrong. Am I incorrect on that?
So you are correct in the sense that our participation at LA Impact, as well as the other agencies, when we do get asset shares at the conclusion of an investigation, it's based on, it's a percentage assigned to each investigator. And an investigator has a certain percentage, a supervisor has another one, and a manager a higher percentage. But as Kristi said, asset forfeiture has changed throughout the years, will continue to change. Criminals are far more savvy. Asset forfeiture is... Trying to find the right term.
Much more difficult.
It's changing. It's difficult.
Much more difficult to get.
Criminals are funneling their money in different forms. So it's harder to seize and at the end of the investigation have, I don't want to call it a return, but shares assigned to the cities. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in additional, or in addition to financial benefits, we do get some of those additional benefits that if we wanted to, we could probably look back and see how much we're actually getting from it. And I think Tom's going to elaborate a little bit on that. But we do get assistance on cases, including but not limited to investigative services, enforcement, and response services. Those are, a lot of times with LA Impact, LA Impact is the enforcement side of it. And then LA HIDA, at least the initiatives that are under us, really is more of the investigative side of it. And so, or information side of it. But we do have training opportunities. We can send our personnel to LA Clear and get training there. They have a very cool training room, and all of our officers are available to use that. One case example that we'll share with you, because they shared it with us... One case example that we'll share with you because they shared it with us is in August of 2023, Laverne provided a lead to LA Impact regarding several burglaries in the city. And they conducted surveillance of suspects casing the neighborhoods, observed a break-in, and law enforcement attempted to stop the vehicle as it left. And a pursuit ensued. And Tom, if you want to kind of talk about it while this is playing because there's...
People there, I don't know if that was a baby stroller or a shopping cart. But you see people at intersections, and you have a car going this fast, Chris, you start talking about some real dangerous possibilities.
You've got innocent motorists left and right, pedestrians. What was an uneventful pursuit may very quickly become very eventful here. Here goes the pit right along the right fender there, and spinning that Mercedes out of control, doing a full 180 and disabling that vehicle for now. We'll see if there's anything left in the tank there. He has come to a complete stop. He is now facing southbound, face-to-face with these three CHP units, head-on now with his hands and arms in the air. Driver getting out of the vehicle. It is over for him. He understands that that vehicle wasn't going anywhere, and his time is up. The driver calmly giving up here, prone out, assuming the position right there in front of those officers appears to be obeying the commands. But remember, there are two other suspects that we are aware of inside that vehicle. So a textbook pit maneuver to finish this guy off and end this pursuit, exactly the way they train at the academy. A perfect 180, face-to-face with those officers. Immediately, they all jumped out, and the suspect fortunately gave up as they now attempt to detain the driver, detain the driver of that Mercedes Benz. Again, we don't know if that Mercedes belongs to this guy or perhaps if it was indeed a stolen vehicle. We only know that the original one was burglary. These are burglary suspects as CHP. And it appears San Bernardino Sheriff now involved in this pursuit as they appear to be taking over this arrest here. It looks like a number of different agencies, including, is that, does that say ATF? I'm not sure. What does that say?
It says police.
It's just police. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I saw, yeah, I thought I saw something else.
I think it says Laverne.
It could be a number of different agencies, including Laverne, which is not too far away. Also, you've got Fontana and San Bernardino. In any event, you can see them still very cautiously pointing their...
So what I wanted to highlight is this case could only have been successful with our participation at LA Impact. And I say that not because we don't have top-notch investigators working for the city, but our detective bureau is, has four investigators. The, as I mentioned earlier, we had two burglaries in the city, same suspect vehicle, unable to identify the suspect to actually put a criminal case together and submit it to court. So with the information, LA Impact assigned 12 to 14 investigators over a five-day surveillance, 10 hours each day, including a helicopter, which obviously has a pilot and the observer. As I mentioned, 12 to 14 investigators, 10 hours a day. That is how we were able to capture these criminals. They're far smarter than we think, or many people may think they are. They're just, they do their own reconnaissance. As I mentioned, for 10 hours a day, this suspect would drive around all the Foothill cities, going into people's backyards, knocking on the front door, trying to determine whether or not somebody was home before they committed a burglary. It wasn't until the fifth day of surveillance, we were able to capture this person in progress, committing a burglary, trying to get a patrol unit to conduct a stop. This actually, the burglary was committed in Silmar, and the conclusion in San Bernardino at the end of the pursuit. And at the conclusion of the investigation, this suspect admitted to the two burglaries in Laverne as well as five to six others along the Foothill community. So just want to highlight that information.
Okay. So recap, the city provides fiduciary activities to both LA Impact and LA HIDA. The annual compensation received for services is $400,000. The addition of LA HIDA provided funding for an accountant. There are non-monetary benefits from our fiduciary partnerships, which include assistance with cases and training, as Tom just shared. And as Ken mentioned, the top priority is Laverne. And the agreements will be reviewed if it becomes too burdensome. And with that, if you have any questions, me or Tom, if it's operational, he obviously knows more than I do about that, can help you.
I appreciate everything that LA Impact and HIDA do for our region of California. We are loaning an officer that's not here in Laverne when you are doing your work with LA Impact, but this is an important thing. And the city of Laverne does benefit and has in the past significantly.
I think in 2022, the council made a wise decision to support LA Impact and LA HIDA with the fiduciary services. One, we're doing our part to help out all the communities here in Southern California to stay safe. I think we are doing a larger part than other places, but it's a part that needs to be done. We do have some benefits with getting an extra person in our finance department. We do have some deficits where we have to front the money first. But as long as we are receiving back what we put in and plus any what we would have received if we had it in the bank, I think we, if we break even, is what we need to at least minimally do. And I think we're doing that. So appreciate, Christie, you, and really looking over that to make sure we are. Because when we first got it, we were hoping to do that. And, but, and we're sure that that's what's happening now. And, but having those resources for our small police department is really good and for our residents in doing that. I think that's why we, as a council, back then and back now, still stand for this. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. Councilmember Cash.
I'm going to take a word. You said, "my esteemed colleague." I like that. I love educators. They always got the greatest words to say. I like to say amazing. You say esteemed. That's awesome. No, everything they said, hey, please continue to do good. And I appreciate it. I can't, better word than, this guy's amazing. I still want you, I recommend taking Steve Johnson and go work UC. I think you're making excellent UC guy.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Mayor Protem.
Yes, I just wanted to say, for those of you who may not know, the mayor and I got the opportunity to go tour the facilities. And I think until you see it, you don't realize how much of a resource being a part of this is. And I commend staff and our officers for the wonderful work because I think to a person, everybody had really positive things to say about our partnership and the contributions of Laverne. So I think that's important because those relationships do matter, as Councilmember Crosby stated, in making sure that we have the resources and the connections available that when crime hits our town, we are able to address it in a much quicker way than if it was just left, you know, if we were left to our own devices. And I also do appreciate that staff is doing what they can in order to make sure that we are not operating at a loss, that, you know, we're continually examining where our opportunities and our challenges are so that if it does ever become too burdensome, you know, we have a course of action that we can take. So thank you for that. And, you know, highly recommend if you get the opportunity, if you've never been, it was pretty cool. So, pretty cool experience.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Lau. Actually, did do all that. I really appreciate you putting that together for us because I was one of the ones, too, a long time ago, that was questioning this and what are we doing? And then looking at the audit demands, it was very interesting to me. I didn't ask a lot of questions because some of those things are, you know, it's just what they do and what we do for them. But in order for the LA Finance Manager came on board, LA HIDA Deputy Director, LA Impact Assistant Director, J. Rick Senior Intelligence, LA Clear Executive Directors, they all met with us. And as Mayor Protem Lau said, they're very happy to have us on board. We do an extremely good service. I think the Finance Manager, they have a relationship with Christie and her staff. They're very happy. They were also, and my biggest question was, we were at the roundtable, was, if things become too much for us, can we come back to you to make sure that we cover our expenses? And they said, absolutely. If the terms are too long, we can adjust the terms. So we give them a service, but they also give us a service. Those unseen things and those unforeseen things that we have that our little city gets a lot out of. And I, all your comments are well taken, and I'm very happy we're doing it. The relationship is excellent. Mr. Freya, you guys do a wonderful job. And again, thank you to Ron Ingalls for putting this together and making this happen because it never would have happened without his involvement. This little town in Laverne makes that big ring of safety around this whole area, and it benefits all of us. And I was amazed, to say the least, at what we do and what they do. So, thank you. And I'm glad you went for the 15%. I think that's smart. I think that covers our exposure as far as what we could be getting now, what we didn't before, like you said. But it's just good business. We're not making a lot of money, but we're providing services for our own staff, money for our staff, but also servicing them. So, thank you very much, and we appreciate the presentation. It was excellent. Thank you. With that, we're going to recess. We're going to close this meeting at 6:11, and recess till 6:30 meeting. Thank you. All of a sudden. Good evening, everybody. How's everybody tonight? Beautiful. We are going to start this meeting at 6:32 PM, Monday, October 16. Meeting is called to order. Mr. Domer. How are you tonight, Mr. Domer? Let's go with, first things first, we want to call and talk about Zoom first before the Pledge of Allegiance.
Correct, yes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public, for tonight, we are going to be broadcasting the meeting via Zoom as normally, but we are not going to be taking any public comments via Zoom at this time until further review of our, and direction by council on our Zoom capability, so.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we are very pleased to have, once again, one of our proud veterans, Russell Lindquist, Marine Master Gunnerie Sergeant E-9, conduct the Pledge of Allegiance for us tonight. Mr. Lindquist, if you please, come on up.
Is this where I get my paycheck? Yes. They tell me no one lied to jokes.
Wait, you were asking for a drink earlier. What are you talking about?
Am I on now?
You are on.
They gave me a microphone. Okay, they can't get fired because they're sitting over there. If you are a veteran, first responder, or if you, for me, if you have a son or daughter in the military, please salute all others. Put your hand over your heart. And repeat after me. "Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." At ease. Oh, that's the Marine thing, isn't it? Always taking the mic from you. Hold on one second. Master Guns is, come on.
Please, appreciate you first and foremost.
Thank you.
God bless you and your family.
I have three sons, military.
Yes. Are they all Marines or?
No, I can only talk one into it. The other one...
Did they join my beloved Army still?
Wait a minute, you know what Army stands for?
Ain't ready to be a Marine yet?
I got it. He knows it.
Been there long enough.
Not as long maybe as you, but I've served in, I want to appreciate you. You know what the Marines call the Navy? Uber, take us here, take us back. Damn loaded. I have a whole bunch here. My wife is going this. Shut up.
It's okay, Marine. We got you. Super 5 first and foremost. The City of Laverne Certificate of Recognition presented to Russell Lindquist. This certificate is presented on behalf of the Laverne City Council to Marine Master Gunnerie, Russell Lindquist, with sincere gratitude and appreciation for your dedicated service to our country.
Thank you very much.
God bless you, Marine. Once a Marine, always a Marine, right?
Especially our service members that are now over, off of, in the Mediterranean. And my grandson just told me that he got back from Indonesia. They said, don't unpack.
And we don't forget our POWs and MIA's.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Yes, Marines.
You know, I bought...
I got to train him every time, do the same thing.
I bought him the Attra. I suppose you pay for my picture.
You did. The check's in the mouth. Just don't cash it yet.
Thank you, thank you. Can I get to shake your hand, too?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Why don't we all stay here? Let's all stay here.
Come on down.
Yes, let's all roll while we're here. I think we can do that.
Yes. Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Cash Vigida.
Here, sir.
Mayor Protem Lau.
Present.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Mr. Domer. Tonight, we have three presentations. The first is a presentation by Assemblymember Chris Holden, Assemblymember of the 41st District regarding a very important state appropriation for Lost Flores Park and Aquatic Center improvements, for which he was truly critical to the city in fighting the money to benefit not just the city, but Bonita Unified School District and the University of Laverne due to our partnerships. Mr. Holden, please join us.
Would you like to join us? Director Duran? She's wearing the same color as I am. That's okay.
Mr. Holden told me he does work for cookies.
He does work for cookies. Yes, Mr. Johnson brought his famous oatmeal cookies, oatmeal chocolate chip cookies. Mr. Holden, I'm going to give you the mic. Are you okay with that?
It won't be the first time. Thank you for that. Well, looks like a blank check, right? Well, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here because this is one of the fun jobs, fun parts of the job, where we can collaborate and work together on budget items. When we talk about policy, we know sometimes that's grinding it out, and we can make sure that we can get the best product to a governor's desk for signature. The same, to some extent, works for budget. But when we've come across this last year where we've had a budget deficit, it usually is a lot harder to be able to stand here today and to be able to recognize the priority of the city of Laverne, and as you pointed out, Bonita School District and University of Laverne, where we can have a cooperative tribe partnership behind something that the state can support. And your proposal, which looked for 3.35 million, was something that we aspire to get. I can tell you, we worked very hard to get the full amount to cover everything that you needed. But we came close. And today is my pleasure to present on behalf of the State of California and the Assembly, 1.5 million.
Did you bring your executive sharpie?
Just, well, you know, I tried that, you know? Then that would have thrown us out of balance, I think. But first of all, I just want to say thank you. You know, this continues to be a wonderful partnership. I love to be able to be in a position to work with the City of Laverne. And quite frankly, we had a big year two on Gold Line, where we believe, and I was just telling Matt just how important it is that we really should get to the point of really celebrating now because the money is in place, it is part of the budget of Metro. And so we're excited about making sure that the state understands that there's flexibility, but there's a commitment to fulfill the promise to these communities.
Claremont to Montclair.
Claremont to Montclair. And so a billion dollars has been re-secured in the budget. We stay vigilant. But tonight, we're very excited that three major parts of this community will be able to partner together and provide an aquatic center or do additional improvements that is going to make it really a sustainable use and engagement for many years to come. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just want to say, on behalf of the City Council, but you are a leader for our community, and we really appreciate that. And the Gold Line extension was a real, it was in jeopardy. Six months to a year ago, it was extreme jeopardy that the funding shifted to some other projects. Mayor Butts, I won't say the name. Oh, did I? Sorry, the people mover. But for the Olympics, and there was a good cause for that. And, but the point was, is that Assemblymember Holden, with all his other colleagues, pushed for that, almost a billion dollars to be pushed for Metro and got Metro to say, hey, yes, we do, we are going to fund that. So it may be increment. We'll take the increments to get it done. So, thank you very much. You're a leader for our community, and we really appreciate it. Now, you're going to speak.
I'm going to speak.
Yes, you are. And explain what we're doing with this wonderful money.
So thank you so much for this. So I'm Yvonne. I'm the Community Services Director. And at one point, Kenan's like, hey, Yvonne, what do we need? How can we secure some funding? And so this partnership with the University of Laverne and the Bonita Unified School District, and specifically Ruinen Elementary, right adjacent to that park, are all going to benefit from this for the Aquatic Center. from this, uh, for the aquatic center, uh, the playground, restrooms, everything. So it's gonna benefit the entire community, school district and university. So thank you. We are very appreciative of this and we're gonna definitely welcome you back for the grand reopening of that aquatic center. So, coming soon, very soon. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're not sure yet. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Okay, picture time.
One, two, and three. One.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Oh, oh, the boss, the boss. I'm sorry. She's so quiet over there. She's never quiet.
Hey. Fancy people here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Starting with you, Al.
Oh, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Matt, thank you.
You got more?
We got more.
Awesome, let's go.
We've got a proclamation, we should have it right here. Yep. Now, we move on to our second presentation proclaiming the week of October 23rd through the 31st, 2023 as Red Ribbon Week, encouraging all citizens, schools, businesses and community organizations to participate in activities and programs aimed at promoting drug-free living and creating a stronger, healthier future for our youth. I would like to now call for Dworthy Elks Lodge 1427, Loyal Knight, John C. McIntyre and his wife Donna, come on up, you two, please. Dworthy Elks Lodge 1427 supports communities along the Foothill Quarter and hosts various events focusing on drug awareness through their, uh, na, through their annual Elks National Drug Awareness Program. We've all put, also put some flyers on the counter, which I have right here, and some little red flags, so please grab one of those. They're right on the counter as you leave, so with that, we're gonna have you come on over here, sir.
Okay.
Oh, well, thank you.
Little Enrique Camarina.
We're here, sir.
Okay.
City Laverne proclamation, whereas the health and well-being of our community's youth are of paramount importance and whereas drug, drug abuse continues to be a significant concern, concern that affects individuals and families across our nation, and whereas Red Ribbon Week encourages individuals and organizations to stake, take a stand against drug abuse by promoting drug-free lifestyles and providing educational programs and resources to our youth and whereas the collective efforts of our community, schools, parents and local organizations can make a significant difference in preventing drug abuse and fostering a safe, healthy and drug-free environment. Now be it proclaimed by the City of Laverne that the week of October 23rd through the 31st be recognized as Red Ribbon Week and we encourage all citizens, schools, businesses and community organizations to participate in activities and programs aimed at promoting drug-free living and creating a stronger, healthier future for our youth. Dated the 16th day of October 2023, signed by myself, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You are not. Perfect squad. There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I always forget to smile.
Oh, you're good. Thank you so much for what you do. We appreciate it.
We were doing dictionaries with third graders this day.
Oh, my goodness. Here, John. John. I won't do the three-minute warning.
A man of few words. Uh, Dworthy Elks Lodge is a very active lodge and we work with, uh, you, our youth, uh, youth programs. That's, uh, the poster contest, the essay contest, and the video contest. And, uh, that's going on right now. And we also do a lot with our adults, working with them and, uh, our military, our veterans. We do a lot with the veterans over in El Monte. And, um, so it, it keeps us pretty busy, I tell ya. And, okay. Today, we were working with the third graders over in Dworthy, uh, School District. We were delivering dictionaries to the, uh, third grade students, which is always a fun job. I love it every year. I've been doing it for 13 years now and Donna and I just have a ball with this. Yeah, so.
Kids are fun, always fun.
Always fun. Yes, we'll be in Bonita soon. We'll be out here, but it'll be later in the year.
Well, thank you very much and thank you for your service.
And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming.
Also, for the law enforcement officers, we also have an Enrique challenge coin for them. Because I'm sure that if you go out to school sites, they'd like to hear this. If you, the law enforcement officers, I'll bring it back to you. Uh, this is a challenge coin, has, on one side, it has Enrique Camarina, was, which is why we have our Red Ribbon Week since 1985. And on the other side, it talks about the Elks Drug Awareness Program and we are the number one boots on the ground, working with the Drug Enforcement Agency. And so if you ever need us, we can get you what you need, so keep us in mind.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, guys, very much. Thank you. Okay, you stay here. Now, we move on to our last presentation, a proclamation proclaiming the month of October 22, 23 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and calling upon every resident to change the social norms that permit domestic violence, provide meaningful support to survivors and express gratitude to those working diligently on prevention and responsive, uh, response as efforts. House of Ruth Executive Director Pat Bell, come on up, Pat, is here to receive this proclamation. Ms. Bell, please come forward again. I don't. The House of Ruth provides various services to the San Gabriel Valley, including counseling, housing, prevention, education, legal advocacy and more. City of Laverne proclamation, whereas domestic violence touches every community across the nation and its consequences transcend generations, impacting children and reshaping whole families. And whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, we stand with the tens of millions of people who have experienced intimate partner violence and we thank the first responders, service providers and community members who work to make sure that every American can live in safety with dignity and respect. And whereas every survivor should know that they are not alone and together we will keep spreading awareness, changing culture, supporting survivors and moving toward world of free domestic violence. And whereas House of Ruth, Inc. provides holistic domestic violence services to Los Angeles and San Bernardino Counties, including counseling, housing, prevention, education and legal advocacy. Now be it proclaimed by the City of Laverne that the month of October 2023 be recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And the City Council calls upon every resident to change the social norms that permit domestic violence, provide meaningful, meaningful support of survivors and express gratitude to those working diligently on prevention and response efforts. Dated the 16th day of October 2023, myself, the Mayor. Thank you, Pat. Do you have a few words to say?
Sure. I just would like to thank the City of Laverne and Mayor and Councilmembers for supporting our work. Laverne has been a longstanding supporter of House of Ruth and we work very hard within Los Angeles County and San Bernardino Counties to offer services to thousands of survivors, parents and children alike. So we, we, we offer critical services. It's important trauma work that we do. We specialize in trauma and I would encourage all of the residents of Laverne that if you do need assistance, to please contact our hotline or visit our website at houseofruthinc.org for help. We're here to help everyone and, you know, the bravest thing that you can do is pick up the phone and make that phone call. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Doing an amazing job, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, domestic violence.
I got the memo with Yvonne. George.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Staff and Laverne Residents. I just wanna talk about some of the things that are happening at Laverne Library. Most of the items will be mentioned today, uh, I discussed at the last council meeting. So, uh, this Wednesday, October 18th, from 5 o'clock, we are having a paint a piggy program. It's, uh, designed for ages six through 12 with parent or caregiver. Um, what's gonna be talked about is basic money concepts and eventually attendees will have a chance to paint a piggy bank. Now, attendance is limited and pre-registration is required, so you can go into the library, uh, sign up for it. Right now, it's, it's full, but from my experience, uh, every single program we have, uh, even though people sign up, there's a percentage that don't show up. So if you still wanna, you know, um, get in there, put your name down, it's possibly, I can't promise you that you'll be able to get into, get into the program, uh, but because there's always people that don't show up, so there's, there's a chance for you to get in there. Uh, you can go on into the library to register or you can go online to visit.lacounty.org/events and narrow the search to Laverne Library. Another program that will be ending October 21st is our partnership with In-N-Out. It's the, I'm sorry, uh, the bookmark contest. And that's like, it's, it's, it's for four different groups, kindergarten, second grade, third grade through fifth grade, sixth grade through eighth grade and ninth grade through 12th grade. Uh, you can get the entry forms at the library or online. Winners in each category will have their bookmarks reprinted and made available for distribution in all the 85, 86 branches, branch libraries. So that's, that ends October 21st, so it's a, it's, uh, some of the stuff that we've seen in the past, there's some real amazing talent out there. So if you have a child, if you know somebody likes to draw, likes to, is creative, send them to library, have them fill it out, who knows, they might be one of the winners. Also, this started in October 7th and it's running through November 18th, is our partnership with In-N-Out, their Cover to Cover Program. This is for ages four, four to 12. Um, every person, every child has to read five books or have a parent or caregiver read, read up to 300 minutes. So once the child reads five books or has had 300 minutes read to them, you can come into the library, you'll get an achievement warrant and that qualifies you for a burger or cheeseburger at any In-N-Out. And a child can repeat this up to three times, so you can have three cheeseburgers or three hamburgers.
What's the age again?
We'll make an exception for you.
I didn't make the cut, huh, George? Thanks.
Four through 12.
Oh, there, sorry. Yeah. Way past that one. Yeah, yeah, there you go.
And lastly, I just wanna mention, um, well, our program that occurred on September 30th, the Library Fest Program. It was a, we had a great turnout. It was totally unexpected, uh, based on our previous most popular events, the Haunted House, I was expecting, I was expecting about 350, 500 people to show up during that three-hour period. I was a little bit concerned on that day because rain was forecasted and it was actually raining when I went to lunch at 12:30. It stopped raining 1 o'clock and, uh, before I left, we only had local staff and also library, LHQ staff, support staff for the event and a few customers. When I came back, it was an explosion of customers. I mean, the house was full, uh, kids everywhere, parents everywhere, uh, the magic show was a complete success. Uh, we ran out of tote bags, the giveaways were a success, the snacks, the face painting, you see kids with designs on their faces.
George, it's Laverne, what'd you expect?
It's true, true.
That's wonderful.
So it was great because, um, I didn't get a chance, I, I was running to desk, but I was watching the parents and kids leave the magic show and you see, you see the children, boys, boys and girls say, mom, dad, look, this, you know, they were enthused, they were engaged, the parents were smiling, the kids were smiling, so it was a, it was a tremendous success. We had, actually, the total was 816, which totally is not expected, especially with the, uh, rain forecast. And I wanna thank the City Council for allowing me the opportunity to announce these programs. I wanna thank the City Staff for giving me the space to post our flyers and also, more importantly, I wanna thank every, each and every member, uh, resident of Laverne for coming out and supporting this program. So, thank you.
Thank you, George. You're doing an amazing job. Thank you very much. Anyone else on announcements? We'll go ahead and bring it up here. I've got a few real quick. I mean, the month of October, I, I, we had, um, okay, we had the, um, we have, the Pumpkin Patch is still going on. Okay, Heritage, at Heritage Park, we have the Pumpkin Patch. It's Saturdays and Sundays, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. with, uh, hayrides, uh, and then on Fridays from 4 p.m. to 8 p.m., so let's support that. Now, this, this Saturday, the 20th Annual Pumpkin Patch Classic Car Show, Saturday, October 21st, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., Heritage Park. And then we have also for the Pink Patch Project for the Laverne Police Department, it is Thursday, October 19th this week from 4 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. And that is, uh, 20% of all that you purchase, uh, will go to the Pink Patch Project for the Police Department. Uh, the next one's gonna be October 24th, um, at Panera, same time, 4 to 8 o'clock. And then, um, let's see, what else do we have here? Uh, Public Safety Open House, right here. Uh, that is gonna be October 21st, uh, from 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. That'll be fire, police, uh, live demonstration, station tours, public safety vehicles, vendors, kids Fun Zone, free kids fingerprinting, Pancake Breakfast by the Laverne Firefighters Association, food trucks, Touch a Truck Event hosted by Laverne Public Works. So, it's everybody, so let's make sure we support that. And I know that it's on the website, the city's website, right, Mr. Domer? And, um, we have the Taste of Laverne, which is this Wednesday. Be there. Now, unfortunately, you have passed the time when the tickets are 45, now they're 60. That was 5:30 p.m. tonight, but that's still a wonderful deal. You can do, purchase them at the gates. I would suggest just go online and purchase them online. Uh, it's gonna be a wonderful event. I got mine at, uh, 4:55 this afternoon. Yep, slid right under the radar. Um, let's see, trunker, uh, we'll talk about some other stuff that happened already. I know we have, um, Halloween, Halloween Hop, which is gonna be, we'll report more on that. Uh, that's October 27th, um, hosted by the City of Laverne in the Order of the Al Hambrons. And, uh, these are, uh, this is for the, um, let's see, um, this is one of the things and then we have another one. There's other stuff going on, we'll report on that later. But anyway, there's a lot in October, so pay attention to the city's website. It's extremely important because you'll miss it otherwise. Some of the things, uh, require you to sign up. There are age requirements, so, um, but, uh, our, uh, Director Yvonne Duran, our Public Works, our Police and Fire, they're all working really hard to make sure that our community sees what they do and have a wonderful time in our community with our kids and our families and the young adults, so. Uh, Council, any announcements? Or did I just clear the, the page there with this? Thank you so much. I'm trying. Councilmember Lau.
I just have one and I know that, um, thanks to staff and, and some residents who have asked for it, uh, the end of the agenda does have the dates and times for various meetings, but I did wanna add that Tri-City Mental Health, it does have the date for the community forum that's in-person, which is, um, 10/17, which is tomorrow, um, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the community center. But there is also an option that was not listed, um, that is on the 19th, which is Thursday, and that's via Zoom from 10 to 11:30. So if you can't make it in-person, um, there is a Zoom opportunity, um, and that link is, uh, you can find it on Tri-City's, uh, social media and you can also find it on their website. So, thank you.
We also have, um, one more that I found on the counter here. It's called LEAP. Laverne Engagement Action Partners. The City of Laverne Community Services Department partners with the Laverne Police Department, Tri-City and Lakota, who are proactively providing services to Laverne's unhoused population while prioritizing the safety to the community. Is he okay? Uh, he's getting a gen. Together, they are the LEAP Laverne Engagement Action Partners Team. Uh, visit our website at www.cityoflaverne.org for additional resources. Uh, basically, Tri-City, Lakota, Laverne Police, Laverne Community Services. Basically, Tri-City, Lakota, Laverne Police, Laverne Community Services, services for unhoused residents. You can, there's numbers here that'll be on the website that you can call. This is extremely important. When there's an issue and you see a homeless person or an issue going on, these are the resources you want to get a hold of in order to try to help these individuals to find a place, find food, find, uh, resources for health, and, uh, so it's very important. So, it'll be on the city's website, so I missed one. With that, we'll close announcements, and we're going to move to consent calendar. I understand we have, we're going to pull Resolution 2370. We have, uh, Cynthia Gabbaldon would like to pull that.
Yeah, that's, uh, item number four.
Item number four, which is the resolution expressing support for actions to further strengthen local democracy, authority, and control as related to local zoning and housing issues. With that, uh, is there anything else that's been pulled, Mr. Domer?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, anything pulled? You want, I take a motion at this time.
I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar, um, pulling item number four.
Second?
I'll second.
Vote, please.
That item was approved 5-0 with four being pulled.
Okay, we will go to the pulled item, Resolution 2370. Ms. Gabbaldon.
So I just want to say, first of all, thank you for finally taking up this resolution. I actually brought this up over five and a half years ago, to, uh, earlier this, when I got back today. I looked it up, looked at my very first time I emailed it to anybody at City Hall, five and a half years ago. We should have done this way back when. On Friday, I met with, I actually met with Assembly Member Holden about the catalyst.org, um, or Catalyst for California's, um, actions that we're taking right now, and to add to this resolution, and I know this would be probably a later date, we're asking for a pause of the six going into the seventh cycle, um, RENA number, um, shift, and also, we're asking for a full audit of the RENA numbers and HCD. There is unquivocal evidence now about the problems with the numbers. They're completely inflated. Right now, most cities in California, actually statewide, we've already hit our numbers when you actually look at the analysis. And there's an excellent video I can share with you, which is done by a council member from the city of Malibu, who has done an impeccable analysis on it. It's about half an hour long, but it's worth it to watch it, and you can see where everything's going. Our population is plummeting. There's math errors in it way back seven years ago when we all first started. Those of us who do sequel work, we all started noticing this, and, um, so I wanted to say thank you, but also take up the next step, which is stopping the next cycle, uh, asking for the audit of RENA numbers and the HCD. And if you need more information on that, I can get it to you because we have the information pulled together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gabbaldon. Anyone else supposed to speak on this item? We will close public comment, bring it back to the dais. Any comments on this item? I just have a comment. Thank you, uh, Mayor Protam Lau for bringing this up. This is an issue that's affecting all of our cities, and now with many cities involved, I think it's time for us to reach out and join that, uh, group of people, but, uh, uh, thank you. Uh, with that, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Vote, please.
Item four on the consent calendar was approved 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now move to other matters. The first matter is a procedural item we do, uh, for forthcoming election, and that is to adopt resolutions to officially call and consolidate a general municipal election for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, with the County of Los Angeles in adopting regulations for candidates for elective office. Mr. City Manager, is there a staff presentation on this item?
There is not, Mr. Mayor, as you say it, but the city attorney is here.
Why'd you put that in there?
No, no. Uh, there can be. So as you said, this is a procedural item, so, um, the city council has to call for the election. Then we have to pass a resolution for consolidating the election with the County of Los Angeles for the March 5th, 2024 primary. The third resolution is a, uh, resolution on setting regulations for the candidates. So it talks about the candidate statements, um, and other factors like that. The city attorney who drafted the resolutions is available for any questions on those resolutions. We will be, uh, coming back at the November 6th, uh, meeting because earlier in the year, we were given direction by the city council to bring back a directly elected mayor, uh, resolution, uh, measure, so we will be bringing that back. Um, and if approved, then it will be added to the primary election on March 5th.
There's the presentation.
That was, that was going to be my first question as to, where is it? So when, when, the next question is, when will that, the, are we looking at first meeting?
So, um, so the consideration of the measure will be the first meeting in November, November 6th. And the one reason why it's not combined today is because the governor had a couple bills on his desk that would have rearranged some of the election code sections, so, um, we're looking at that and writing in the staff report. Um, when that would actually take effect, and that's going to be one of the, uh, issues in the staff report, is, um, we don't qualify for anything sooner, so it'd be the election of 2032, that if the action to go to a directly elected mayor, that's when that measure would be, uh, put into effect, so.
With that, I'll close public, I'll, let's see, open up public comment. Any public comment on this item? We're saying none, we'll close public comment, bring it back up to the dais. Any conversation on this from counsel? Any questions?
Just, uh, make it clear because, uh, the report says there is no incumbents because, uh, Mayor Protam Lau and myself, when we were elected, we were at large, um, and not in districts at that time. This is the, uh, election to finalize any of the, all of the, the districts and having their representative.
It's called the clean out. Mr. Johnson.
So, this year, um, what is it? Three fifths of our public are not eligible to vote?
That is correct.
Although the measure, uh, should you approve putting it on the ballot, will.
Will be for all.
Will be for all voters, yes.
Yeah.
But they would only be voting on that item, they would not be voting for a council member, correct?
Okay, with that, do we, as, we're going to take this as one vote for resolutions 2372, 2373, and 2374, calling for the general municipal election for Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, consolidating the election with the County of Los Angeles and adopting regulations for candidates. Do I have a motion?
That wasn't a motion?
It was, actually, but I'm not going to make the motion.
I was going to say, I'd second it.
I guess I could, but, no. Motion. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson, read it again.
I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, it was the wrong item. I don't agree.
That item passed 5-0?
Take this away from me.
Yeah. I wasn't drinking, I promise. Now we move to our last matter regarding the Christmas morning program, designating the Christmas parade route and authorization of double overtime payments. City Manager Domer, will you please provide a staff report? Or do you have a staff report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is, uh, follow-up to the last two study sessions, uh, where we're provided direction by the city council to bring back a proposal for the, um, some specifics for the Christmas morning parade route. So, uh, as we do every year for the Christmas morning event, because we are using lights and sirens and, uh, emergency vehicles or vehicles equipped with lights and sirens, uh, in a non-emergency status to provide, um, a quick and safe, uh, tour for Santa throughout the city, uh, we have to designate the entire city as a parade route. Uh, within the staff report, it talks about some of the vehicular codes that are required for that. That includes, um, something as simple as amplified sirens and lights, um, and then also allowing somebody to be in the back of a pickup truck or on a truck, uh, safely driven, uh, at eight miles per hour or less. Um, and so if we didn't designate the entire city as a parade route, we could not, um, convey, uh, Santa around. So, um, those are the two major items. Per some of our discussion at the study sessions, what also included is this, is a proposal for double overtime for city staff. Uh, if we're not able to get the volunteers for, uh, driving navigator, driver, and potentially a third vehicle driver, though what we're looking at on those third vehicles are active duty, uh, both police and fire, uh, that are able to pull out immediately for any type of call for service. So, again, we're looking at ensuring that we have non-emergency vehicles, uh, on active duty, I guess, um, is the major component of the parade. Uh, if there is an active duty vehicle, they are ready first and foremost for a call for service. Will pull out after that call, can join, but the parade will continue to go, and Santa will be around all five, uh, routes, and the sixth route is that of the mobile home parks and senior, uh, residents. So, that is the item. If there's any other questions, um, again, we are not, uh, going to be doing the candy and the runners. We have looked and we are mapping the entire city. The intent is to get every single street, um, as in past. Some small streets have been, uh, you know, kind of bypassed only because when the driver, there's a lot of discretion the day of. The drivers look down, there's been no one coming out during the lights and sirens, so they continue. Uh, that will be a continuance, but again, the goal is to make sure that we go down every single street in the city, um, so.
We'll still have the Santa tracker and all that stuff.
Uh, this, no, the Santa tracker will not be, um, what I've been told, not this time, but also because in the north part of Laverne, it just doesn't work because of the cell, uh, tower reception. Uh, what we are doing is looking at routes and then giving the eight miles per hour. We are trying to look at definitive times, so we want to release that. The other thing I did want to mention is because of public information and making sure everybody gets the information, um, we're going to be sending out, uh, half-page postcards to everybody, uh, carrier route system. So all residential properties will get a postcard with information about, um, the Santa parade and some additional items like recycling your Christmas tree and other things like that. But, so we want to make sure that everybody has the information about the, uh, holiday events in December, uh, the Christmas morning parade, and, uh, of course, there'll be, you know, please go to our website or contact, uh, the city for any further information.
Are we still accepting volunteers, or is there a purpose for volunteers, or do we?
Because of the, um, no need for the bags and the goodie runners, uh, not on that level, but, uh, we're doing an assessment right now of the drivers and any other volunteer needs. So we're going to be communicating with folks, uh, mostly those folks who responded yes in the affirmative, um, on the survey. So they did provide us their information, so we're going to reach out to them first.
There also was consideration, also there was a big concern regarding the cul-de-sacs, and some of us missing the cul-de-sacs, and they've been reviewing that and looking at overviews to make sure that the larger cul-de-sacs will get attention, but some of the smaller ones where the turnaround's tight, they'll make sure that they spend the time going by to notify them that they're coming.
Correct.
You need to listen for the sirens. If you hear those sirens, get outside. Just get outside, because sometimes they come very quickly. Other times, it may take a while, but there's nothing better than talking to your neighbors and having a hot cup of coffee or whatever you decide in the morning on Christmas morning, and enjoy yourself in your crazy Christmas outfits, you know, that your wives or whatever make you wear. Yes, uh, I know you do. I've seen you in your outfits your wife make you wear. Okay, with that, we have any?
Are you looking at Lori when you sit down?
Yes. With that, we're going to open up public comment. Do you have any public comment on this item? That would be? No. Okay, with that? Yes. This is on the Christmas program, not on public comment. We have an open. This is not general public comment, this is only on our Christmas Day celebration. There you go. If you don't have a comment on public comment, we're going to move on, on this particular Christmas Day. Okay. We're going to close public comment and bring it up to the dais. Any other comments or questions for staff? I just want to say thank you, this has been tough. I want to thank, uh, our, uh, Community Services Director, Avon Duran, and all of our departments, police, fire, public works. This is an all-hands-on effort, and I know that's changed for a lot of people. We're going to try this out, see how it works. I personally think it's going to be extremely well-done, and I think we're going to get through our community, and people are going to see Santa, they're going to have sirens, and they're going to have a great day, and our people that are doing it are going to be able to get back to their families, and, uh, our staff to be able to enjoy Christmas Day like most of us do. With that, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the Christmas morning route destination and authorization of double overtime payments for our staff.
Second?
Second.
Vote, please.
That item passed 5-0?
We will, uh, now move to public comment. Is this time set aside for anyone wishing to, uh, address the city council on items not listed on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council? I'll remind everyone that the Brown Act prohibits the city council from taking or engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to staff or place for discussion at a later date. Um, we usually have a three-minute, uh, time limit for public comments. At this time, those wishing to make a comment not listed on the agenda, and I hear on the counter, please come up to the podium. Just state your name and your residence, if you would. We'll open up public comment now. Ms. Gabbaldon. I see you moving.
So, as was earlier announced, this is actually Domestic Violence Month. So it is a time again to bring up the cost of the CCWs and this psychological eval. Three quick stories. In Hemet, there is a mom that had two homeless people in her front yard, she's 28-years-old. She goes out there to ask them to move out of her yard. They proceeded to stab her to death in front of her two kids. This just happened about three and a half weeks ago. Two days ago, in Huntington Beach, somebody drove through a Kohl's in one door and went all the way through the building and out the other door and hit three people and a whole bunch of stuff. Um, and then over the weekend, a woman was by herself in her house in the Hollywood Hills, and, um, somebody broke into her house, and she was able to shoot him and actually, actually protect herself. Again, I have to emphasize the reasoning and the fear that we're using to have, to, to be pushing back against CCW is invalid. CCW holders are not the problem. It is everybody else. Anybody can attack any of us at any time with anything, a car, a knife, many, a rock, lots of different things. The, um, um, it is very imperative that more cities get on the bandwagon for, um, is it still here?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm watching that too, just so you guys know. He's putting something on your front door right now. The reason, the reason to drop the CCW fees is to be more open to more women to be able to get, get these things. A thousand dollars, I've interviewed now about 40 people in town, and they said there's no way they could ever do it at a thousand dollars, or 8.99 or whatever it is. So, and please also reconsider the, uh, eval issue because the stress, especially if they are a domestic abuse per, um, a victim, the stress of going through that is overwhelming to them. So, just, I'm asking that again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gabbaldon. Anyone else on public comment? I did, I texted her, though. We just let her know we're not accepting, so. We're going to close public comment, move it up to the dais. Counsel comments? Oh, I'm sorry, we, we're not doing Zoom. Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor, council. First of all, I want to thank, um, the mayor and the Mayor Protam for responding to my, um, email the other day, and appreciate your comments and your interest. Um, also, just as a reminder, a couple, I don't know, a month or so ago, Joe Gabbaldon got up and talked about Meals on Wheels, and I wanted to acknowledge that our fire department made a very nice donation, um, or our, the, the association, as well as the, um, police association. So, thank you to all you guys for what you do and making a contribution, and, uh, hopefully, we got some others at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you.
Public comment, anyone else on public comment? Please.
My name is Greg O'Hether. I live here in Laverne. I wear the San Dimas shirt because they're our good neighbor, and, uh, I wanted to address the, the unincorporated island on Foothill, where they're planning to build, um, that apartment, you know, for those homeless people that everyone is against. And so, uh, my suggestion, it's pretty ambitious, but I think that it, it, it might be within our reach to achieve. This was it. This map of Laverne from 1887, I don't know how, uh, if you can see this clearly, but this, um, dotted line right here, this is the general area. There's Foothill Boulevard, there's downtown, there's like Benita right there. And then, uh, Benita right there. And then this dotted line right here that goes along Foothill all the way to Town Avenue in what is today Clermont, and then it goes to some unspecified area. It's in between, it looks like where that, that street that goes south from Foothill that goes right to the water filtration plant. I can't think of the name off the top of my head, but that street, it's like where this dotted line goes south. It goes all the way, runs all the way south, south of Arrow Highway. And then it goes, from there, it goes west towards Los Angeles, and it goes to exactly the street here, San Dimas Canyon Road. This is all dotted right here. Then it goes north all the way up to San Dimas Canyon Road to like where the mountains are. That area was the original town site of Laverne when it was founded by the townspeople, the homesteaders, who were already there before the boom town of Lordsburg was founded in 1887. And so I'm pointing this out because if, according to this map, the author of this book, she states that the, this borders that she drew up, because she drew up this dotted line, she said this border was ascertained from the residents of some of the original, I think, original Mexican families who were descendants of the original owners, before the Lordsburg Town Company came in and started the town site. And so my point, and my point is, is that the land where the island is today, the northern part where they're going to build that, where, well, they want to build that apartment complex, falls into the original land that was part of the original Laverne town site. And so I was going to say, San Dimas a lot of times says it's unincorporated San Dimas, but it's really unincorporated the original town site of Laverne. If, if this author, the, what she ascertained from the people she spoke with is, is true. So I'm pointing that out because this was my ambitious plan that I was, did I go over the three minutes? This was my ambitious plan. I wanted to see if you guys could take into consideration annexing that island, because it falls into the original Lordsburg town site, so we could zone it the way we wanted to. And we could always de-annex it later on down the line if, if we needed to. Because I know that the city originally annexed the land that's Mountain Meadows Golf Course in 1959, and then they de-annexed it in 1977. So that's a plan that I hope you guys will take into consideration as far as like, that's a really ambitious plan. But if you could do it, we could zone that, that land according to what we wanted, instead of letting these, you know, outsiders come in and impose their will upon us.
Thank you very much for your, all your time and effort on that. Thank you very much. Anyone else on public comment? We're going to close public comment and move it up to the dais. I'm going to start with you, Mayor Protam Lau. There's nothing been going on, so we'll move to the next person.
Just a couple of things that I wanted to, to go over just really quickly. We did have the Historical Society since Sherry isn't here, I just thought I'd do a plug for her. They did put on an event at Hillcrest for Race and Place, and I thought it was, it was very well attended. It was really interesting. And what I thought was really cool was a lot of the neighbors got to talk to each other about what used to be in Laverne. So you had people who said, you know, my great, great whoever owned the citrus grove that used to be there. And so it was just an interesting historical lesson in terms of the city. So if you are not a member of the Historical Society, you can ask the mayor how much it costs to be a, to be a member.
I have time to.
But, just a plug for them in case-
And the truck's running.
And the, is it running?
Yeah.
Oh, they fixed it. Oh, good.
They moved it in and out.
Okay. So keep an eye out for other events from Historical Society. We also had an Active Transportation Committee meeting that the mayor and I went to. There's been some good discussions there in terms of what folks in the city are looking for in terms of modal, different modalities for accessing different things within the city. So if that is something that you are interested in, please feel free to share that with us or with the committee for additional information. And then since it is Domestic Violence Appreciation, or Domestic Violence Prevention Month, I know I had mentioned this before, but the House of Ruth had an unfortunate incident where a drunk driver collided into their facilities. And so they're in the process of pulling permits right now to try to get construction, but I know that any donations would be welcomed, given that that facility is out of use at this time. Additionally, the K-9 Foundation is also seeking donations in anticipation of their Christmas event. So if any of you are interested, I would urge you to take, to contact them for further information about that. And then two last things. There is, I think it's Cassie is doing that LV Beautification Day again this Saturday, and they're hoping to get more residents out there to help keep our city beautiful. So if you are able, they are looking at doing it, I think, I don't know if there's a time period for this, but-
Do they have a location, or are they just?
They are targeting bus stops and local schools to make sure that those areas are kept nice for those populations. And then last but not least, Homecoming and the inauguration of the ULV's 19th president did happen this past weekend. The mayor and I were there, as was council member Cash. It was a great event. It was really nice. And unfortunately, we did not win Homecoming, but it was a good day anyway. But I did want to address some concerns that residents had raised with respect to good neighbor relations. And I just want folks to rest assured that there are conversations being had with the university to make sure that they are cleaning up after themselves when necessary, that they're abiding by, you know, noise ordinances and the like, so that we can continue to partner and grow together. So with that, that is all from me. As always, be kind and have a great week.
Councilmember Crosby.
I would like to welcome our latest Laverne resident, little Lacey Nicole Ward, was born October 10th. She is the little sister of Penelope and the daughter of Stephen and Megan Ward.
Oh, my goodness.
I want to also thank George May. He's always updating us on the Laverne County Library. Not, other cities that have county libraries, and they don't always have the output in what we do in our, in our library. I really appreciate, George, what you do every time and make sure that our residents know what's happening there and access, access our library. October 24th, we have our Youth in Action Family Meeting here in the chambers. On October 27th, we have our Halloween Hop in the Laverne Community Center. And the 28th, our Halloween Carnival. And those are for our special needs kids. And thank you, Yvonne, for always doing that. And lastly, I want to wish happy birthday to our Mayor Protam. Wendy Lau's birthday was yesterday. So happy birthday.
She hates clowns, by the way. Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. Councilmember Cash?
I wanted to take my time to wish you a happy birthday. I sent you a happy birthday, but I don't want to be here all night.
Let's do it.
But I think we should. I'm going to take my time to do that, and I'll go over things.
Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Ready?
Ready. One, two, three.
Two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Wendy. Happy birthday to you.
And many more clowns.
Many more.
Oh.
Many more. Continue to do good, stay vibrant and strong. And you looked amazing in your amazing robe that you earned. I know it's not easy to earn that, JD, and it costs a lot of time and effort. So it's good to see you there. The mayor, I think you wore it like a beret instead of wearing it normally in the hat.
I know, you were just trying to tell me, saying that beret, I don't wear hats like that very often.
But that's, that's a good time.
Trunk or treat?
Yes. I was going to say that for you.
No, no.
But trunk or treat was amazing. I saw a mayor, I know everybody had a great opportunity.
Put out candy, remember?
I put a lot of candy, more than I should. I do that every year, and I want to apologize to Yvonne, community director, the staff, but I want to thank you and your staff and everything you guys do. The smiles on those kids, it was worth every piece of candy. It was amazing to see them there. We were packed, Mayor. We were packed, folks. It was a great, great time to see everybody, just to see the community together. At the end of the day, I always tell people, all we have is each other. So if we don't work together, collaborate, and make our place better for the future, you know, what good are we doing now? So having said all that to say, it's still mosquito season. I was at St. Gabriel Valley, vector control.
I tell you what, Cash, it is the worst.
I don't know what to do anymore. So I just, I just embrace it.
Can that female mosquito come in and just eradicate anything for us, please?
I don't know, I'll tell you. I mean, everything has its purpose. God did what he did, but we got that. And then last but never least, yeah, so please, any standing waters, it was just a friendly reminder. And then DEA is doing a drug take-back event at the Public Safety Building. So if you have any old pharmacy, yes, the date will be October 28th. Yes, October 28th, our Public Safety Building, 10:00 AM. Be there and bring any of those expired pharmaceutical prescriptions. Don't take them. I don't think they have any use of anything else. So anyways, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Councilmember Johnson?
This is a wonderful time of year. We've got so many community events that I'm looking forward to. Taste of Laverne.
Oh, yeah.
Halloween, I mean, we get 400, six, seven, a thousand.
Thousand, seven hundred.
We get a lot of kids. We, we buy a lot of candy, too. Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas is coming up. I mean, this is just a wonderful-
It is.
-time of the year. I do have one other thing to bring up. LA County is having a household hazardous waste roundup. That's going to be in Covina, Saturday, November 4th. So that's coming, coming up next, beginning of next month. And again, the address, 303 Glendora Avenue, Covina, California, 91724. So just around the neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. All the above. We are really truly blessed to be in an amazing neighborhood like this. Kids come out. The trunk or treat is always an absolute success. And I know it's a tremendous amount of work for our staff, all of our staff in our different departments, but the adults, I think, love it just as much as the kids. And I think that's the testament to the city we live in. So thank you. As, as Councilmember Cash, he was, he was taking care of it, walking through there. I was able to go there, but my son's birthday, so we had some functions going on. But again, thank you to staff for that. It's wonderful. I was able to, we had a 740 Foothill project. A young gentleman was just talking about that. They had basically a fundraiser over at San Dimas Park. There was probably, I'd say, 80 to 100 people there, I would imagine. Is that Rick? 80 to 100 people at the park? Yeah, it was nice. Just, I spoke for a little bit, just explaining that, you know, 740 Foothill project, the location is, is not the right location. It needs to be somewhere else. So keep our heat on Core International to find a different location. And as I stated, I did a minute with the mayor, that Supervisor Barker has no plans to release those funds at this time. So for the NOFA funds, the $7 million or so of dollars to help that project along. So that's nice that we have that support from our supervisor. And let's see, what else? Actually, we were at the inauguration. It was a lot of fun. Saw some interesting things. We had some rap dancing, which was really kind of cool. Actually, I broke up the crowd a little bit. Actually, we were going to jump out and go in this, we were going to go on the stage, but we decided that probably wasn't a good idea. But I want to welcome Parti Smandabi, our 19th president of University of Laverne. And I think she's going to do wonderful things. She's well-received. And it was just, it's, I, there's so many things, there's so many things going on right now. They're trying to keep track of them. And you have to pay close attention to our city website to make sure that you don't miss anything. A lot of this stuff is just, most of it's just fantastic. So again, with that, we have a closed session tonight, Mr. Domer, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me to, the city council meeting closed session for the following items. Conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495.7.6. Negotiators are the city manager, assistant city manager, and city attorney. Employee organizations are the Laverne City Employees Association and Laverne Police Officers Association. Second item is consultation with legal counsel pursuant to California Government Code Section 5495.6.9 regarding pending litigation, City of Camden et al. versus E.I. Dupont de Nemours and Company et al., number 2, call in 23-CV-03230-RMG. I believe that's regarding, in layman's term, the PFAS issue, which is forever chemicals and water. So that is the end.
Will we be reporting out?
We will.
There's possible reporting out.
Possible reporting out.
So at this time, our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, November 6th, 2023, at 5:30 PM. As a reminder, upcoming events and meetings are posted on the last page of the city council agenda. Thank you all for being here tonight. We recess in the closed session, 7:35 PM.